Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, I need a motion to adjourn the executive session, please.
Microphone?
Microphone.
Microphone.
I apologize, I need a motion to close the, or to adjourn the closed session, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay, Madam Clerk.
I adjourn this meeting.
I just.
He just did.
We adjourned the Cow.
I need a motion to adjourn the.
No, he adjourned the Cow.
I need a motion to adjourn the Cow meeting, please.
That's right.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, who offered?
I did.
Okay. Councilmember Pataglia.
Don't look used to that.
Deputy Mayor Conestino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Madam Clerk.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:4-6, et sec, notice of which was sent to the record and the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Conestino.
Here.
Councilmember Sims.
Yeah.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Here.
Mayor LaBrus.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, good job. Okay. Tonight's an exciting night, we have a lot of children here tonight, we're receiving proclamations from the Hackensack Junior Track Team, could I have their head coach come up, please? Do you hear?
So, boys and girls, as I call your name, I want you guys to come up here, all right,
and stand by your coach. First one is Seth Neal. That's the same Seth Neal, I knew I coached him. Hey. I was his coach. Assistant coach, Stanley Finney. Head coach, Paul Stevie York.
Congratulations.
He's my neighbor. How you doing, neighbor?
The four-by-four-hundred relay runner of the Hackensack Junior Track Team, Bran Ron Pomerico. Eight-hundred meter, four-by-four-hundred relay runner for the Hackensack Junior Track Team, Mekki Walker. The guy's not here, but we'll see that he gets his proclamation. Four-hundred meter, eight-hundred meter, four-by-four-hundred meter relay runner for the Hackensack Junior Track Team, Dylan DeCambray. Fifteen-hundred meter, four-by-four-hundred relay runner for the Hackensack Junior Track Team, Amiri Whittle. Fifteen-hundred meter runner for the Hackensack Junior Track Team, Dylan Gorgela. Congratulations. Shot put for the Hackensack Junior Track Team, Sage Nicholson. Sage is also a national medal winner. All right, give him another round of applause. Four-hundred meter runner for the Hackensack Junior Track Team, Michaela Vigilante. Congratulations. Eight-hundred meter runner for the Hackensack Junior Track Team, Taran Coleman. Four-hundred meter runner for the Hackensack Junior Track Team, Avery Ziegler. Nice job, Dave, nice job. Four-by-four-hundred meter relay runner for the Hackensack Junior Track Team, Jayden D'Souza. Four-by-four-hundred relay runner for the Hackensack Junior Track Team, Jonathan Galette. Congratulations. Four-by-four-hundred meter relay runner for the Hackensack Junior Track Team, Andre Ferris Jr. Andre. Fifteen-hundred meter runner for the Hackensack Junior Track Team, Brian Brancato. Four-by-four-hundred relay runner for the Hackensack Junior Track Team, Kiona Weber. Four-by-four-hundred relay runner for the Hackensack Junior Track Team, Larissa Itondo. Four-by-four-hundred meter relay runner for the Hackensack Junior Track Team, Amaya Oliver. And last but not least. One-hundred meter, two-hundred meter, four-by-four-hundred meter relay runner for the Hackensack Junior Track Team, Abigail Dennis.
Hold on, hold on, don't be.
No way, no way.
Look at the guy in the yellow shirt right there in front of you guys.
You gotta get a better camera.
Congratulations, everyone, I'm proud of all of you. Congratulations, coaches.
Good job, good job.
Congratulations, coaches, good job.
Good job, that's what we need.
Thanks, Coach.
Okay, neighbor. One more time.
Before you, before everybody leaves, I could just have a moment, I want to talk about the coaches real quick.
What up, guys?
You guys really should support your youth coaches, I coached for years and years and years, what these guys do, I know what they do, I know the time and effort they put in, they keep your kids out of harm's way, all right? I've always felt that youth sports are the best form of crime prevention we have, keep kids off the streets, keeps them focused, and they get back to their parents tired and go to bed at night. So, but it's, I want to, hats off to you guys, really, thank you so much. This one we had done once before, but there was a miscue and the gentleman weren't here, so we're going to redo them. Could I please have Walter Sutherland and Nathaniel James, if you're here, please come up? Awesome. Is your buddy here?
No.
No? Some of you were here last time I read this, and this is quite amazing. Whereas on Sunday, July 24th, 2016, Walter Sutherland, a city sanitation employee, and his friend Nathaniel Jones, uh, James, were enjoying a day of fishing behind Pep Boys on South River Street, when they observed a young boy yelling for help. And whereas Mr. Sutherland and Mr. James ran to the Bogota Bridge and saw one of the men in the boat had fallen off into the water, and one of the female passengers was unconscious in the boat. And whereas Mr. Sutherland and Mr. James, without any regard for their personal safety, immediately entered the water to help the man and the woman who were in distress. They assisted the male passenger back into the boat and assisted with CPR on the female passenger until the ambulance arrived. Now therefore, I, John P. LaBrus Jr., Mayor of the City of Hackensack, along with the members of the City Council, do hereby honor Walter Sutherland and Nathaniel Jones for their bravery during the events of July 24th, 2016. Awesome.
Thank you, Walter.
That's Nate's, I see him, all right? Thank you. Again, you think about it, you know, jumping into a, you know, that situation without any regard for your own life, shows a lot of character, and the city really appreciates that. And we have one proclamation left for somebody who's near and dear to us, would Dean Mattalian please come forward? And this reads, and this is another event where, you know, thank God for being in the right place at the right time. Whereas on August 20th, 2016, at 11:42 a.m., Constable Captain Dean Mattalian was off duty with his family at the Home Depot in Lakewood, New Jersey, where he observed a young child left alone in a parked vehicle. And whereas the temperature outside was above ninety, and even though the car was running and the air conditioning was on, the child's head was forward, chin touching his chest, and sweat could be seen running around his closed eyes. And whereas Constable Dean Mattalian called 911 and then contacted the store manager of Home Depot, Lakewood Police and EMS arrived, just as the child father responded to the parking lot and opened the vehicle so that the child could be transported to a local hospital for medical attention. Now therefore, I, John P. LaBrus Jr., Mayor of the City of Hackensack, along with the members of the City Council, do hereby honor Constable Captain Dean Mattalian for his quick actions that may have prevented an injury or death to this child. Great job, thank you. There's no doubt in my mind that someone upstairs put Dean Mattalian outside that car at that moment, at that time, so, thanks again. And we will never know what would have happened or could have happened, but we know what didn't happen, right? Thank you. Okay. Need a motion to, for the approval of the minutes of the Cow and regular minutes, August 22nd, 2016, and special meetings, August 4th, 2016, and August 8th, 2016.
Mayor, you're gonna have to do them separate because for the August 22nd meeting, Councilmember Pataglia was absent.
All right, so we do the regular minutes, August 22nd, 2016, we were all here, you said?
No, Councilmember Pataglia.
Councilmember Pataglia was absent. Any motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia, absent. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Now I need a motion for the special meetings of the 4th of August and the 8th of August, 2016.
Um, the 8th of August, Councilwoman Keeling Geddes was absent.
Okay.
Do them separate, too.
Oh, just the 8th, she was gone, so August 4th, please, 2016? Need a motion?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Now I need a motion for the meeting on August 8th, 2016.
I'll offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes was absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay, City Manager's Report.
Okay, this is the City Manager's Report of September 12th, 2016. Just a few comments, it's, it's things that happened tonight recognizing people's bravery and accomplishments of our youth is what makes being in government, especially in my role as City Manager, a very proud moment for me to see the success of our, of our community. This is the second-to-the-last meeting that I will be with you, and I deeply appreciate the efforts of, of so many people here in Hackensack. Second of all, the parents of the track team were not mentioned, and maybe they were, but I'd like to emphasize, the parents entrust their, their children with those coaches, and that's a, a great thing, but the parents usually are running them around, and they're the unsung heroes of, and rightfully so, they're, they take responsibility for those kids, and thank you to the parents for taking the time to do that. I'm gonna jump around here just a little bit, go right to the number-two item on my report. Congratulations to our junior football team on being awarded a USA Football Grant. This grant includes a clinic, pre-autograph session worth fifteen hundred dollars, worth of equipment and tickets for an upcoming preseason game. This will be an opportunity for the youth of Hackensack to actually be, attend a clinic with professional football players, and they may inspire them to get to the NFL themselves, so congratulations to them. The sanitation bids, the financial analysis is still in progress. When that information is completed, we will get that information out as soon as possible as, as was promised, and then the meeting date will be set up. Number three, the Street Festival is coming up, the Hackensack Street Festival, the 11th such festival is occurring in October 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Main Street. There'll be food, vendors, games, entertainment, and fun-for-all, it's a way to support your local businesses and your local Main Street. It's a great event, all are welcome, and we usually get a pretty big crowd. Just pray that the weather holds and it doesn't create a problem. I think last year, it was high winds, and I know I spent time with the fire marshal and various police officers making sure that all the covers or the tents were properly anchored so they didn't fly down, because there are wind tunnels, if you're on Main Street, there are wind tunnels. So, mark that calendar, October 1st, for the annual Hackensack Street Festival. Mayor, that concludes the Manager's Report for September 12th, 2016.
Thank you. Moving on to business, Resolution 330-16.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 32-2016, an ordinance amending Part II entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170 entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to amend Section 50 entitled Schedule I, No Parking, and Section 51 entitled Schedule II, No Parking Certain Hours. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Have a motion to open to the public, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing none, motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County of Bergen State, New Jersey, that ordinance number 32-2016 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 331-16.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 34-2016, an ordinance amending Part II entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170 entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to amend Section 62 entitled Schedule 13, Bus Stops.
Have a motion, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 34-2016, as introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on September 27th, 2016 at 8:00 p.m. or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when aware, said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 332-16.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 35-2016, an ordinance amending Part I entitled Administrative Legislation, Chapter 13A entitled Condominium and Cooperative Unit Owners Advisory Board, Section 3 entitled Membership Organization.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 35-2016, as introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on September 27th, 2016 at 8:00 p.m. or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 333-16.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 36-2016, an ordinance amending Part II entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170 entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to amend Section 70 entitled Schedule 21, Parking Meter Zones.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 36-2016, as introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on September 27th, 2016 at 8:00 p.m. or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 334-16.
This is a resolution authorizing an ambulance reimbursement.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 335-16.
This is a resolution for the authorization for accrued time payout of $20,946.59 to Police Officer Aldrin Lamboy.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 336-16.
This is a resolution authorizing the accrued time payout of $11,375.55 to Fire Chief Thomas Freeman.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 337-16.
This is a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
May I have a motion?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. And a resolution, 338-16, to pay the bills.
Resolution authorizing payment of bills.
May I have a motion?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Senator Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Before I move forward with the consent agenda, does anybody have anything that you've pulled off?
You're gonna pull and modify 352-16.
Yeah, I'm gonna pull.
Yes, I'm pulling off 339-16, and we're going to modify Resolution 350. Two.
Two-16.
And that needs to be pulled off.
Yes, pulled off to modify.
Yes. Okay, so.
So, 339 and 350?
352.
352, I'm sorry.
I can't vote on it.
Do I have to abstain?
Yeah, I have to abstain on it, possibly. We're gonna vote on it, I just can't, yeah.
Okay, anything else? That's just those two?
Right, so.
Pull the consent agenda, and then we're gonna mod, vote to modify it and vote.
Right, so we're going to move forward with the consent agenda minus 339-16 and 350.
Any items required, expenditure, or supported by certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and the consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. Consent agenda includes Resolution 340-16, Resolution authorizing recreation refunds, 341-16, Resolution designating and amending New Jersey Transit bus stops on municipal roads within the city, Resolution 342-16, and Resolution designating and amending New Jersey Transit bus stops on county roads within the city, Resolution 343-16, Resolution authorizing proposed Bergen County community development grants for 2017, Resolution 344-16, Resolution authorizing a person-to-person liquor license transfer, Resolution 345-16, and Resolution to correct qualifying professional service provider, city attorney, to assign Alexander H. Carver III individually, Resolution 346-16 is a resolution authorizing change order number three to PM Construction for sewer separation project, Resolution 347-16, and Resolution authorizing correction of Resolution 287-16 awarding contract division media, Resolution 348-16 is a resolution authorizing the tax collector to cancel duplicate billboard charge, Resolution 349-16 is a resolution authorizing correction of Resolution 321-16 for lawn and maintenance charges to property liens, Resolution 350-16 is a resolution authorizing a leave of absence for William F. Monarch, who's Recreation Director, and Resolution 351-16 is a resolution authorizing a place-to-place liquor license transfer for an expansions of a licensed premise for PF Changs.
May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as it was read?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
I abstain. Resolution 352-16.
This is a resolution appointing Ted M. Ehrenberg, a city manager of the City of Hackensack, effective, and it should say October 1st, 2016, in the title, and then again in number two, where it says September 9th, should say October 1st, 2016.
Need a motion to amend.
I'll make the motion to amend. I'll offer it.
Okay, we need a second.
Need a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
And now we need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt as resolution as it was amended. Need a motion to accept as amended?
Offer.
Need a second, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
And now we need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt as resolution as it was amended. Need a motion to accept as amended?
Offer.
Need a second, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis.
No.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. And that is it. Oh, need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. This time, anybody from the public who'd like to speak, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk, you have five minutes, thank you.
Richard Muller, 70 Lewis Street, Hackensack, New Jersey. Sir. I was surprised and actually proud of the DPW workers that rescued the two people from the river, but I was also a little concerned because I found out afterwards, they're not even permanent employees of the city. These two gentlemen are very exemplary people, and I think they would make excellent employees of the city. I hope that the council would reach their hand out and try and make them permanent employees.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, after reading your statement concerning the dismissal of the final criminal count against Ken Ziza, I cannot remain silent. Your continual accusations of a corrupt Ziza machine are not only untrue and beneath the dignity of the mayor's office, they are insulting to all of the career employees, board members, and volunteers who have contributed so much to our city for over twenty-five years. Many of us are extremely proud of the service we have given to Hackensack in government, in our schools, and in many different community activities throughout the years. Members of the Ziza family who have participated in local government are just a few individuals out of the countless numbers of us who have devoted much of our lives to the betterment of Hackensack. You should be ashamed of having to rely on smear tactics to further your own political career instead of being able to run on a positive record, which you apparently recognize that you don't have. Your constant baseless political attacks are divisive and disgusting and say more about you than about your political opponents. I challenge you to cite one example of corruption attributable to any of the people who you regularly attack. In fact, in the Ziza decision which you recently referred to, the judge made it clear that there was never a case against him, and like the appellate division judges before her, she identified several Hackensack police officers who she believed perjured themselves to obtain the original conviction. There I have not heard a single statement from you concerning what you intend to do about that issue. Some of these officers were plaintiffs in the lawsuits you referred to. Are you trying to recoup that money now that the judge has exposed them as liars? And how you can even criticize anyone over a lawsuit is laughable. Do you think we forget that you were sued by your own campaign manager, who you had appointed as acting city manager, and that you paid him over half a million dollars to settle that lawsuit? Do you think we forget that you are currently being sued by the former city clerk, or that you've already made settlements with at least five police officers in regard to issues that occurred on your watch? But the best one may be the lawsuit you are also defending yourself against, which was bought by your own council colleague, who was one of your running mates, and you have the audacity to raise lawsuits as an issue. In regard to corruption, which you like to mention so often, do you know what I consider corruption? How about give back to employer of over twenty million dollars of taxpayer money? How about supporting an unlawful raise for your council colleagues who happen to be city employee? How about giving thirty-year tax breaks to developers who contributed to your campaign all at the expense of our local taxpayers? How about your taxpayer-funded public relations person threatening me and trying to intimidate me because I was in a local restaurant where you were holding a political fundraiser? The truth is that this city has long been corruption-free until you took over. I am confident that your strong-arm tactics and your smearing of longtime community activists will be rejected by Hackensack voters, should you decide to run for reelection next year. Hackensack voters are way too smart and way too decent to allow you and your shameful approach to government to continue for four more years. In my family, we have an expression, John, and it's "Don't poke the bear," and I was poked the other night. Thank you.
Next, please.
Good evening. My name's Harry Lewis, lived in Hackensack forty-three, forty-four years. I spoke at a council meeting in very late June, which was my first for quite some time. I've visited once or twice since then, and I'm back again tonight because since that meeting in June, I've grown a little bit more disenchanted with your leadership or lack of leadership. That evening in June, I specifically addressed taxes, the rate of increase of taxes that they were accelerating. By coincidence, it was that day that the estimated tax bills arrived in the mail. And in the envelope with them was what I referred to as like a propaganda letter, bragging about specifically four hundred dollar average decrease in taxes, first tax rate cut in ten years. Two out of every three Hackensack homeowners would either see a reduction or stabilization in taxes. I use my tax bill as reference, and I said for that quarter to a comparable year ago, my increase was two hundred dollars. Now, I'm not suggesting that I'm gonna be seeing an eight hundred dollar increase in my tax bill this year. I am anticipating five or six hundred dollars, which is going to equate to about six percent. So on the issue of taxes, stabilization, reduction of taxes, you have failed, and to suggest otherwise in your literature. Following the letter came a folded-up glossy pamphlet. I suggested then, and I repeat now, that that information is misleading or outright bogus, and I'm leaning towards bogus. I took an informal poll of my neighbors, I could not find one who was seeing, expecting a decrease in their taxes. That evening in June, of the three council members present, two actually quipped that their taxes were going up too. I am looking for that average taxpayer who you said can expect a four hundred dollar decrease in their taxes, because two out of every three, quoting you, two out of every three Hackensack homeowners would be seeing that. I can't find one. That evening, another resident, another resident addressed lobby groups, and he said, "It seems the large commercial real estate persons, they have their lobbyists, the real estate developers surely have theirs, the Main Street merchants have theirs," and the resident asked, "Who's lobbying for the single-family, small homeowner?" And I think because he's a little goofy, he wasn't taken real seriously. So I'm gonna answer his question, because you've never answered mine, you've never addressed them since June in any way, and the answer to that question that that resident asked is, "We're supposed to have you." And that night, I used the word disappointment with regard to your leadership. Tonight, I'm upgrading it to, "I think you failed." Now, I understand that politicians don't get elected by saying no to things, but in your case, maybe reelected with regard to, you know, continued spending, which you seem to be doing, borrowing and spend, borrowing and spend. This average taxpayer can't afford it anymore. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Larry Eisen, Maple Hill Drive.
Morning, sir. Or afternoon, sir.
Number one, I can testify, my taxes went down by over eight hundred dollars. So here's at least one guy. That was not what I came up here for, though. I don't know how often it happens, but a graduate of Hackensack High School, a gentleman who lives in this city, was in the Olympics. Unfortunately, he wasn't as successful as you hoped to be, but I think that's still quite an extraordinary achievement, and I think it would be appropriate for the council to wish a proclamation honoring Steve and Moja for what he did, because it very rarely happens.
We did have a small discussion on that.
Okay, I hope you follow up.
Yep.
And now I am representing my wife, she told me I had to say this. She's normally a very, very quiet, you know, unassuming woman, but I can only tell you, she is really pissed off about the doubling of the parking meter fees on Main Street. It takes quite a bit to get her really angry, but she is really riled up. I don't know how many other people have spoken on this, I missed the last couple of meetings because summer vacations are very enjoyable, more so than council meetings, but I don't know how much added revenue we had, but it seems to me inconsistent with our efforts to restore Main Street to what it was and simultaneously double the meter fees. They're just at cross purposes with each other, and I really hope you would reconsider the issue.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mark McCart, UPSU, Labor Representative and Hackensack Resident. A couple of things I want to touch on real quickly. Councilman Pataglia, last time we were here, both, two of the council people came out publicly have shown, have announced they will not support the privatization. You were not here, so I'm hoping during your comment section later, you'll let us know where you stand on the issue. I also wanted to address Rich's comment about the two gentlemen who were just given proclamations. Sadly, if you privatize sanitation, those two men will be two of the ones laid off. It's just how the cookie crumbles. But tonight, I want to talk more about reforms, privatization, and good government as a whole. There's been a trend over the past couple of years to basically blame our taxes on all of the workers, not the high-end waste, but the person down in the trenches actually doing the job. A lot of this came from our governor, who basically came in as a reformer and said he was gonna fix government by taking away all the benefits from the working people. He bashed them, he said their medical costs were too high, they were all paid these outrageous numbers, and their pensions were costing too much. One of his solutions was privatization. He said, "Oh, I'll privatize the DMV." Well, we'll talk about that. First of all, public workers, for the most part, don't like, make a lot of money. Most of them are working-class people. Unless you're a political appointee, or you have friends in government, you're not making over fifty thousand. Or you've been here maybe thirty years, you might make over fifty. They now pay into their medical. Some of them pay a higher percentage into their medical than you would pay in the private sector, and they pay more for their pension than they ever have before, and newer workers are gonna get less out of that pension. And as far as DMV, it was a fiasco. The fact is, is that they said it would work fair, it would be cheaper, and it worked more efficiently, it did quite the opposite, it was more expensive and it worked horribly. And the reason for that is private sector is about profit, that's what capitalism is. Government is about providing good services, and if the taxpayers had it their way, it And if the taxpayers had it their way, it would be about good services done real cheap. And you can't always do that, because they forget that some things cost money, gasoline, wages. But what they really, I think, get upset about is the waste. And you heard it tonight, and you'll hear, you've heard it at other meetings, is when there's money for some, but there's no money for the people doing the actual work. A good example, again, was our governor, who gave the state workers less than 2%. He said, "Oh, there's a 2% tax cap that I have to follow." And then immediately after, gave his staff members, who made over $100,000 each, well over $100,000, 4% raises. That's what makes us angry. When reformers come in and say, "I'm going to fix government," and then they don't. What they really do is, they just take the money, and they pocket it, or they give it to their friends, or their political contributors. That's what the taxpayer is tired of. They're tired of the favoritism. They're tired of people living high off of their taxes. That's not the workers that I represent. My guys don't live high on the hog. These are guys that come to work every day, hoping to make a little bit of money, maybe have a little bit of pension, have a house, and send their kids off to school if they're lucky. If they're lucky, and have medical, so that, God forbid, something happens to them, they're covered. And sadly, this isn't, and I talked a lot about the state tonight, but we all know it's not limited to the state level. We see it on the town level. It happens here in Hackensack. And we need you, as a council, to show leadership. You need to show that you're different, that you're serious about reform. You need to put an end to this talk of privatization. Because, again, those two gentlemen who had just given a proclamation, had, one of them was here tonight, and he had to walk out of here, still wondering if he's going to have a job a month from now. That's pretty sad. These folks deserve dignity and respect. It's great that we're revitalizing Main Street, but what good is Main Street if the workers that clean it and patch it can't afford to dine there or shop there? Is that the society, and that, is that the city we want to live in? Because it's not the city I want to live in. I want the workers that take care of us to be taken care of. And again, what we're asking for here is your leadership. Because whoever sits in this chair takes his leadership, or her leadership, from you. So, you need to make it clear that you want these workers, and you need to do that by stopping the privatization. And you need to say, "Look, if we need to spend a little money to settle their contract, then let's do so." These people deserve dignity, respect, and a decent contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich, can I have a moment before you start, please? As you can see, or as was mentioned before, we don't have the numbers back yet, guys. We don't. So, we're not going to make any decision yet. But we all know these numbers came in pretty high. And the reality is, you know, we don't look like we're going to be moving forward in that direction of privatization, right? But we still are going to wait for these numbers, all right? Unfortunately, our CFO is, has a very sick family member. He couldn't attend tonight. And him and the deputy mayor have been working feverishly to go down to the local finance board to finance the last, hopefully, of these tax appeals on Wednesday of this week. So, you know, again, when these numbers come in, we have all the things, we will make the announcement, all right? But we saw what numbers came in high. We saw the lack of bids, all right? So, you know, follow my lead on that one, all right? Thank you. Go ahead, Rich.
Rich Zarbo, Spring Valley Avenue. Just the first meeting of the year, really. You know, the year starts now. So, it's the first meeting of the season. September starts the year.
It's the fall, the fall season's starting.
Yeah, yeah. And it culminates in a municipal election in May. So, the year is a short year, and so the voters get to have their say in May. So, everything said now is meaningful, so, because most of it will be remembered. Okay, maybe, maybe just starting the year, but this stuff is meaningful in the final year, okay? So, look, my taxes went up also. So, how did Larry Eisen's taxes go down?
Hey, you got a friend?
Yeah.
It doesn't work like that.
No way. Can we, can we find out what that's all about? My taxes went up about $450 bucks.
Me, too.
And his house is like twice the size of mine. So, why did his go down?
Because he didn't, there was no tax appeals involved.
Count Larry. Okay. So, yeah, taxes went up, and it's horrible, and you know it. You're giving away huge tax breaks to developers. They're getting a windfall in tax breaks, and you're raising our taxes, okay? So, come on, John. You know, what were you going to say? Go ahead.
I'll let you finish. I don't want to use your time, unless you're done.
No, no, I'm not done.
Go ahead.
Okay. Also, we have a new city manager coming in. I mean, it's, I mean, it's a sad situation to see Mr. Trost go. He was just getting his sea legs, and I don't know where he's going, okay? I think he should hang around. So, I want to encourage him to hang around. But I think you should have encouraged him to hang around. You know, you're the mayor of the city, you have a council, and don't you encourage employees to hang around? They don't necessarily leave after two years, do they? So, talk to them. And how about some information? Maybe I missed it. Is there any information on the new city manager? Is there sort of a bio? Is there information on what?
Well, if you stick around, I'm going to introduce him tonight.
Oh, you're going to introduce him? And we're going to, and we're going to hear about it, right? Is that it?
I will let him give you a little background on himself.
Also, this, this whole big project for Main Street, why don't you just pave Main Street and fix it up a little instead of, you know, waiting? It's absolutely horrible now. So, it's horrible now, and you're going to just do something a little too much. Why not just pave it and make it at least bearable down there, so business can go on? It's just awful, John. And so, please. And the future of these tax breaks, can't we get a statement from you saying that you won't give them away as 30 years anymore? Can you do that? I mean, can you lower them?
Huh? I'll answer when, I don't want to use your time. I'll answer when you're all done.
All right. So, that's it. I also want to thank Mr. Trost for getting behind the Cultural Center and getting that headed forward. So, we're going to make it hard for him to leave, and we're going to praise him a little bit. Thank you for getting the Cultural Center funding on board, and thanks a lot. So, that's it. I'd like to hear more about the new city manager and what direction we're going in. Thanks a lot.
All right. Before, I mean, before the next person steps up, I'm going to address the pilots again. Rich, I understand you, the way you look at it, but the reality is, it will help your taxes, your taxes go down. And without the pilot, your taxes will go up. There's no doubt about it. Paving Main Street wouldn't be logical right now, because there's going to be a lot of work done on Main Street, including some sewer work, sewer separation going on down in that area, I believe. And a lot of utility work with the new buildings going up, and digging up for the new signalizations that are going in on every intersection, brand-new ADA curbs on every single intersection to meet the ADA requirements. So, it makes sense to pave it now, so we, but it will be repaved right before it goes to two-way. And yes, everybody is happy about the Cultural Arts Center. We thank Mr. Trost for helping push that through. And what else? You had something else, Rich? Where are you?
Here I am. I forgot already.
Okay. Next, please.
Rich Gelber, Clinton Place. I haven't been here in a long time, not because of a lack of interest. I just want to mention, Larry, my wife is quieter and very sweet, too. There's no question about it.
Your wife is quieter.
She's very quiet.
Maybe at home.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You guys have finished three years. You're hiring your fifth city manager tonight, number five in three, three, you've completed three years. You're in your fourth year. Something just is crazy with that, but we'll see. Maybe we're going to hit pay dirt this time. I want to mention the parking meters. I think it's the worst possible time to change the enforcement to nine o'clock. There are some restaurants that are just now really starting to perk up. Main Street is getting busy. There's no possible way that the revenue is going to ever cover the losses of the people that leave, or even the cost of the officers that have to enforce it. I just think it's a crazy time to do it. Also, we have many, many hundreds of meters involved. Every single meter's going to have to be relettered and redumbered. They all state the six o'clock on them. It's now nine o'clock. I don't think a ticket's going to hold up, but I'm not an attorney. I know we have great representation here as far as legal counsel. But I think you should really consider reviewing the parking.
We are, Mr. Governor. Absolutely.
Okay. I want to just mention Police Department, they're looking for a contract. No money. I think they'd settle at this time for one year. I don't think this council has been at all fair with the cops. They are, they are, the fire and police in this town, and our DPW, this town, it does incredible with the staff we have. That's the main reason of the development, the interest we have in this town. Mr. Mangan once said, "The city's finances were what brings developers here." Well, that's, that's absolutely ridiculous. It's a factor, but I think that the appearance of the city, the way it operates, the police department, the fire department, those are the main, main draws, the safety and concerns in the town. I think we owe the cops a little more than we're giving them. They have not had a fair shake. Their last contract they settled was near its expiration. They got a three-year contract toward the end of the third year. Now, they've been without a contract again. Mayor, was there any discussion in the council of doing anything in the town for Patriot Day yesterday?
No.
No.
Actually, I had a discussion, there was no discussion in the council, I had a discussion at home about it.
Well, that doesn't do us any good at home.
No, I know, I know that. We do have a county, we do have, in Hackensack, we do have a...
We're the county seat. We're, we're a large town. I saw many, many towns celebrate in many different ways. Garfield has an incredible flag display they put out, requires nothing but the placement of the flags. Hundreds of people come and visit it. We had, we had policemen dedicated enough to come in on their own time, down, put on their uniforms, take a city car and go and represent the city in Jersey City, in other venues throughout North Jersey. Mayor, even if it was a minute of silence in front of City Hall, or a maneuver with a flag, I know there are no veterans on the council right now, but I really think these things, yes?
I'm not on the council, but I'm a veteran.
Well, you're not on the council.
True.
You're not on the council. And maybe you should have brought it up at a council meeting, because I really think we were lacking there, Mayor.
I don't disagree with you, Mr. Governor. And we will definitely look into that, see if we can do something.
I'll just briefly go on sanitation. I don't think it's new news that I've come up here many times over the years and urged the city to look at their sanitation trucks and make financing arrangements to get us trucks. Did you really think, Mayor, that you were going to get low-ball bids to come in and cheaply move the garbage in the city?
Don't know, Mr. Governor. I really don't know.
Well, it didn't happen, though, did it?
No.
We're still left without garbage trucks, uncertainty in the city. I think the council has to make a decision. Buy garbage trucks. You had no problem putting, approving a soccer dome, no problem pouring millions more in the Recreation Arts Center, which, you know, I'm not against the Arts Center, but maybe we have to put our priorities in order. Our sanitation, our police, our fire, those are number-one prime issues. The rest all fall in place. I'll mention, I've come here before. About a year ago, I came about streetlights. The city did a survey. They found over 200 were out and had PS fix them. We're paying for these without a meter, so we're paying whether they work or not. We have over 100 out again, many in the Central Business District, shouldn't be, Mayor.
Okay. We'll look into it. Could you write that down, please, David?
And I thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Regina De Pasco, Parker Avenue. At the meeting earlier, you spent a lot of time on the calendar, what day, what this, whatever. If you don't let us know when you cancel a meeting, when you change a meeting, it does no good, okay? So, can you put that as a priority? I don't care what else is going on, if you do not let the residents know. It's, it's, that's not open and transparent, okay?
Not arguing.
Nixel. I don't know how many times I have to come up here about this. Nixel is not being used properly. Two weeks ago, August 30th, there was something going on. Prospect Avenue was closed at Essex. I happened to be down at the Rite Aid and saw the police close Essex Street, so you couldn't go up there. I happened to be running all over Hackensack that day with my son before he was leaving for school, getting this, that, saying goodbye to whoever. And I had to figure out what way to get back to my house, which is on the other side of Essex House, Essex Street, from where the work was being done. Not one single nixel. But the Splash Park's opening. We get 10, okay? Can you, can you get a grip on that? Because that's kind of important. That traffic was horrendous, horrendous that day. No notice, nothing. The garbage pickup, okay, when you change it to twice a week, we got this nice glossy notice in English, in Spanish, and beginning the week of June 6th. Didn't say when it'll end, okay? And people still don't know when it's ending, because people are still putting garbage cans out twice a week. I know you had the reverse phone call, and I know it said the city of Hackensack this time, and repeated it twice. But can we get it right? Why can't we, like, set a timeframe, and so nobody's caught off guard, okay? When you do it next time, because hopefully, it'll be done next summer, whoever does it? Lot C. I found this very interesting, that I was reading online this article about the redevelopment in Lot C, and it says, "For more information, contact Philip Swabinski." Our public relations person is to be contacted on Lot C redevelopment? Really? You can answer all these questions later that I have. Sanitation, it's a bad idea to begin with. You're stretching out a bad idea. You are, these, these men's lives are in limbo. What are you going to do? You're leaning towards, but you have to. Who do you owe it to? You owe it to us. You owe it to your workers. You don't owe anybody else anything. You owe the residents and the workers. That should be your priority. I don't know why you're stretching it out. I don't know why you're making, you know, such, we have to look at the numbers. The numbers stink. The whole process stinks. We want our own sanitation. We don't want it privatized. But you think you know better? Well, you'll find out who knows better, I guess. With the ambulance reimbursement, wow, we had our third. We're up to maybe, maybe $400? It was $140,000 the cap before. Were we getting ripped off by the hospital before, or are we getting ripped off now? Or do the residents are getting ripped off? Because do they not know? But you know what stinks about it, too, is they have to pay their bill before they can get reimbursed. Their bill could be $2,500. Their bill could be a lot of money. But do they know that they can get reimbursed? Who knows? It was supposed to be prominent on the website? It's not. My final question, this new city manager, did you give him a three-year contract? My final question.
No.
He did not get a three-year contract?
No.
Okay. What about lots, this Lot C, going to the, contact the public relations person?
My answer on that is, that's the person who wrote it. I guess if there were any questions on that article, that's what he was referring to.
No. For more information, contact Philip Swabinski. When the article is on redevelopment of Lot C.
They wrote, they wrote the press release for that, Mrs. De Pasco.
Well, it, it reads that you should contact him for redevelopment. It doesn't say he wrote the press release, okay? We're paying for this, then, misinformation? The ambulance, three?
I'm not sure how many. I'm not keeping track, to be honest with you.
Well, it's not 300.
No, it's not 300. I don't know if it's three. Like I said, I'm not keeping track.
Three?
It could be a few more.
It is three.
It's three.
Three. Something wrong there, no?
I will ask Mr. Dibb to put it more prominently on the website again, all right?
And maybe instead of promoting yourselves in, you know, the propaganda with tax bills, you could promote that.
Not a bad idea. Thank you.
Good evening. Carolyn Davis. I'm not going to talk long on this, just saying that I'm, privatization was never a good idea, and I also feel it's been dragged out for a long time. The bids are high, but the pressure and the stress that these men are under is high also. The community spoke a long time ago that this was something they did not want. So, I hope for those men that this is resolved and resolved very quickly. And there will be a public meeting. There was discussion about that being in a larger venue. Is that still going to be the case?
If necessary, yes. We, soon as we get the numbers in, we will decide we can do it at a larger venue if we feel it's necessary.
Will we publicize enough that the people will know, so they can come out to a larger venue?
Absolutely.
Okay. The second thing I want to talk about is the parking meters. Simply, I think it's a bad idea also. On one hand, we're trying to build up Main Street and attract people. On the other hand, now, we're going to charge people more to park at night. And I just think that is a bad idea also. In the past, the past year at least, there've been concerns about the Board of Education and the City Council having joint meetings. It's the start of a new year, and I would hope that that is in the works, that the Board of Education and the City Council have joint meetings, because some of the concerns, and so we can finally get our Board of Ed meetings, okay, onto the, so it can be televised. That seemed like such a silly issue last year, talking about a couple of hundred dollars, about when we're spending mega-million dollars on all the work that we're doing in the city with the artists and everything else that we can't settle. Who's going to pay a couple hundred dollars?
Well, we're back, we're both, we're on two channels plus YouTube now, Mr. Davis.
City Council is, but I don't know who Board of Ed is. And you said you were going to get together. There was a question about who was going to pay.
No, we were getting together because they own the equipment to put it on channel, I don't know what their channel was. So, we set up a separate channel right inside here, so, but that issue's resolved.
Who, what is holding it up from being televised?
It is televised.
The Board of Ed means it's not.
We have no control over the Board of Ed and what they televise.
But you were supposed to work that out together.
No, nothing to do, we had nothing to do. We, that wasn't an agreement about televising their meetings. That was about televising our meetings, and we took care of that.
I, I, I'm gonna have to look back at my old notes because they were here, Board of Ed meet, uh, people here at the meetings, and there's a question about who was going to pay.
They are on television as well, the Board of Ed meetings.
I haven't seen them.
Yeah, they've, they've been televised for, help me out here, Board of Ed. How long you been televised?
Maybe five years, maybe more.
Rick, how long you guys been televised? Five years. Yeah, a while.
They were televised before us.
Yeah, they were televised long before this council.
There was something that wasn't happening because there was a question about the equipment. I don't remember exactly that conversation.
No, that's, that's, that's just a little confusion. It was about, we were trying to get, use their equipment to televise council meetings, not so much to, anything to do with televising their meetings.
Okay, that was my confusion. But I do hope they have those joint meetings. The last thing I want to say is, I understand the anger and frustration felt by those whose taxes went up. I myself, my taxes had gone up, would wonder how I could pay my taxes. I was one of those people whose taxes actually went down. But again, it's because I was so overtaxed. That's why my taxes came down. I was paying almost $10,000 for a piece of property that I shouldn't have been paying $10,000 for. So yes, I am one of those people whose taxes did go down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Coley.
Chris Coley, Prospect Ave. I just want to say, I see that those illegal stop signs were removed on Anderson Street, and I was wondering if the city was gonna follow up with some legal action to find out who authorized, who forced the city and the police department to put up these illegal stop signs, and what, what action will be taken against these people because the cost was inflicted on the city? I noticed in today's news, Moonaki is gonna build a brand-new city complex, including police, fire, and courts, for two-plus million dollars. Our civic center, which is an existing building, and I'm sorry, Artful Culture, and we are already kicked up to $4 million. I also like to know what's gonna happen to the old place on Holt Street that held 112 people with a brand-new kitchen and bathroom in there. That was a very nice place, too. And I must say, what a colossal waste of taxpayer money for a splash pad at Carver Park, which included another set of bathrooms, a set of bathrooms in the Sims event, Convention Center there that he won't allow nobody to use. You have an ugly 12-foot fence going around it. You closed off a parking lot. I, and, and you have three to four children, and you want to build another one. Boy, oh, boy, isn't that terrific? And what news is going on on the soccer dome? And the tennis guy that rents our tennis courts, city property, pays us a rental, I assume? Does he also pay us per hour? Does he pay, does he cover any insurance? Are we liable for it? Who is he? Who does he know? And how much money is turned into the city? Same thing with the fish fry at Carver Park. He rents the city property building, uses city building for an entire summer to sell fish fry. Where, where does he get that right to use city property and make a profit and only pay us, or what does he even pay us? The other question I had is, what's going on with the basketball square garden that's going to be built at the Malone Building? Right now, the city has two existing senior citizen centers, one on Hudson Street, one on First Street. Now, we're gonna build a new basketball court, I guess on the first floor, put a senior citizen on the second floor, which will include another bas, another, another elevator to go up there, more bathrooms to go up there. Why don't they just use the existing ba, courts? It has showers in there. Maybe instead, build a nice office for sanitation and utilize that whole recreation and use the entire part of that building for sports. And my, another question, I just read tonight's docket. Who is this director of recreation? How many are there? I thought Pat Regirio was the director of recreation.
Assistant, assistant director.
It says, in there, it says he's the director. But, okay, I'll accept the assistant. Basically, but that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Paul Nichols. Enjoy your retirement. I know you're not gonna do nothing. You're probably gonna work somewhere.
Your wife requires that.
I've been trying to do something with the county for a little while, and maybe I can bring it up here because someone else said it. Yeah, I mean, we are the county seat and kind of lead by example in certain areas. I mean, over the last year, I've gotten, I'll give you a little backstory on what I'm gonna get up to, to maybe make it simple. I get a lot of calls and emails and stuff about eviction, people coming to me and coming to the county, coming to whoever they can to find out about eviction problems. And it's usually the day of, or the day before, or too late. You know, where can I get help? And what I wanted to do with, I've, in the last six months, I've actually gotten people with problems with Hackensack Housing Authority. And I never thought of going to Housing Authority Board meeting for Hackensack, but I figured I'd bring it up to you guys. Maybe an idea, pass a resolution or do something, and then maybe the county will pick up on it, is people, there are a lot of resources for homeless prevention and people that are, because not everybody that's being evicted is, is something that they, I mean, it could be like, you know, loss of a job. What are you gonna do?
Right.
I, I mean, what, I, I was evicted a long time ago. I didn't even know what to do. I mean, I guess someone that does something for the first time, I guess they don't know what to do. So if they were to get, I looked on the website, there's not even an eviction appeals process or a process. I know evictions in general go through the county, but if, like, you were to have, when Hackensack Housing Authority gives the tenant, "You gotta do this," maybe you could put on the letter on the bottom, or like the eviction notice, I think some of them are orange or something in, in areas. You could put something in orange and say, "For help with assistance with bills," or something like that, "Call 211." You know, because 211 will tell you, "Hey, you lost your job, you're, you're on low income? You can qualify possibly for rapid rehousing." You could probably go to the center, the Housing Health and Human Center, Housing Health and Human Services Center, and get assessed for E S G, Emergency Solutions Grant. There's all kinds of stuff that people, a, a lot of the people that come to me, and I guess to their shelter, too, they don't know. You know, some people don't even know to go, where to go. They just like, "Oh, my God, like, I have a mental illness, I can qualify for the Mental Health Law Project." You know, there's all kinds of things, but a lot of the people that I'm in contact with that contact me or whatever, don't even just say, "Help, what can I do?" And it's usually too late, and I know that there's always a 30-day or something like that, I'm assuming, with Hackensack Housing Authority. I don't know how, like, private, well, not private, but like towns' housing authorities work.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that there is a, the, the Housing Authority is actually governed by federal statutes through HUD. And I know of possibly one of the incidences that we're talking about, one of the residents did have a violation that they had to actually leave for a period of time. I'm not gonna mention the staffer's name, but the staffer obviously knew that person because they had lived there for a while. By federal guidelines, they had to get out for a period of time. He actually paid for them to go, out of his own pocket, paid for them to go to a hotel because he didn't want to put them on the street. So Housing Authority is, is, in Hackensack, is well-run. They care, and unfortunately, there's a, there's rules that they have to abide by. Otherwise, they would lose, potentially lose funding from the federal government. So they're a good operation.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not complaining about the process. What I'm saying is, is I'm assuming it's like anywhere else, you get a, a first appearance notice, and...
They had followed, they had followed all the protocol.
Right, right.
And there was no other option other than to carry through.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm generalizing within a certain amount of time. I don't want to say anybody personally, but I'm just saying, like, maybe when, when these people are approached, however it is, whether it's by mail or whatever it is, there could be the resources on what they can do.
Certain Section 8 housing, which is another category, if, if, if it's, if it's given to that individual, that certification, they can't have other people come into that apartment. They can't bring their grandkids, or their aunt, or their uncle into that apartment. It's a violation of the Section 8 housing rules.
Well, Section 8's gotta be whoever's on the lease.
And then they get removed. Could I make a recommendation, Paul? Why don't you call in or visit this week if you could, stop in and see? Because I don't see why we couldn't put out, you know, the hotline and everything else. It's a resource, you know, get, get that to the, the residents over there. I don't know, you'd probably have to check with, or you would have to check with Tony and find out, but if it's a usable resource, I think it's a great idea, so, all right?
Yeah, it could be in general. It doesn't have to be a specific person that we're talking about. It could be just in general.
Right. Stop in and see, and see David and see, let him call Mr. Fiorenzi from the Housing Authority. All right?
All right, thank you. And if we can do this, then I can say to the county, "Hey, look, Hackensack's doing this. You get your list from the county clerk and do what Hackensack's doing to prevent some people from becoming on the street."
Reach out to David, let it, make sure, he'll call Mr. Fiorenzi. We'll see what's going on, whether it can be done, all right?
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Richard Solk in Hackensack. With respect to Mr. Ehrenberg, or wish the best to, have you negotiated his contract? I'm not really interested in his salary, but are there, is there any terminology that gives him, let's say, tenure beyond what the statute provides? That's four months without cause, three months with cause? Would you or future council wish to terminate his services? Anybody?
No, I don't believe so, not, not four months, no.
Is it beyond, the statute says four months is the max. Are you providing for a contract which would give him greater?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. I'm gonna be very fair to you tonight, John. I'm gonna give you an opportunity. I'm gonna pose some things to you, and I'll come back at the next meeting and see what you come up with. May I assume that you have never reviewed the rules of professional conduct that are applicable to attorneys in the state of New Jersey? Would that be fair to say?
Yes.
How about the canons of ethics promulgated by the American Bar Association? You've never?
No.
No. And yet, you know where I'm going. Two weeks ago, you stated to a group of other attorneys that you believe that my conduct during the negotiations, dispute, whatever you want to call it, over the school resource officer in the fall of 2013, I acted unethically. You stand by that remark, John? You did say it, correct?
Yeah, in my definition of my ethics, yes, it was. I agree with that.
Would you flesh that out, please? I, I, I wanna know...
I'm not gonna go back and forth between that and here, Rick. I'll do it with you personally, but I'm not gonna do it with you in this environment.
Excuse me, you, you think you can say something like that about a practicing, you know how important it is to an attorney to have a reputation for conducting himself ethically?
I believe I said it at the time.
Excuse me?
I believe I said what it was at the time.
No, I don't know what you're talking about. What, what did I do during the, the SRO session?
My opinion on that, I don't want to eat up your five minutes, if you...
I just answered your question.
My, my answer to that question is, I believe that the board, including your, and the attorney, knew that the city was owed that money for the SRO, and because they didn't get a bill, they didn't pay it.
Okay. I'm gonna read you something I prepared in October of 2013. When you sat there and let Rose Greenman slime me the night you celebrated the homeless guy who turned in the $150. So it was, Rich Galber, I don't know if he's still here, said, "Call Solk on the car because he was the city attorney and he's the board attorney." I'm gonna read it. Please don't interrupt me. It may go beyond the five minutes. I served as the city attorney from 1989 to 2005. Excuse me? As has now been confirmed, there never was a written agreement between the Board of Ed and the city regarding the SRO. This is to be contrasted to the agreements between the city and the Housing Authority, which provides for a police detail dedicated to the Housing Authority. That agreement was in writing, and on a few occasions, I, as city attorney, was called upon to review, make changes, et cetera, to the document. I never knew during my tenure as city attorney that there was any agreement between the Board of Ed and the city. I had no reason to know. There was nothing in writing and nothing in terms of issues that ever called for any city official to employ my services as city attorney regarding this topic. As a parent, I knew, of course, of the presence of a police officer at the high school, but whether this was funded by the city, which I assumed was the case, or reimbursed by the Board of Ed, was never a topic for my concern. In 2005, I became attorney for the Board of Education. My investigation revealed that the last reimbursement payment from the board to the city was in May 2006. Please note that as the board attorney, I was not provided with the Board of Ed's bill list for their meetings until Dr. Cletus became superintendent in 2008. I did become aware of the arrangement in 2010, when former business administrator Fred Martens advised me of it and that no payments had been made for years. Contrary to how Rose Greenman has slimed me by stating that I willfully and knowingly concealed the situation to the city's detriment, I disclosed the situation to the then-city council and the city attorney prior to a meeting of that body shortly after I learned of it. I was there, there, actually, in my capacity as special counsel. I don't know if it was on the Bergen Mall expansion or one of the hospital deals. My statement to them was something like, "What are you guys doing? Do you realize the city has not billed the board for years for Kenny Martin's salary? That's like $100,000 a year." And you were there, John. When the SRO dispute hit the newspapers in September, I received a call from Tom Padilla. He told me that he had had a conversation with former interim superintendent Ray Gonzalez in 2011. He said they discussed the issue of payments for the SRO. He told me that he said to Gonzalez, quote, "The money comes from the same taxpayer. What's the difference? Forget about it." That's what I knew about the SRO arrangement. I am not, nor was I ever, the CFO for the city, the business administrator for the school district, the superintendent of schools, the city manager, nor the chief of police. Now, please, I'm coming back in the next meeting. You flesh out what you said, or you retract that statement, John, because that's what's fair. Do we do that?
I will look into it, Rick.
You'll look into it.
But I have some issues with it still, so, all right? Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
Good evening, Kathleen Tavolo, Hudson Street, Hackensack. I was really, really disappointed when I was on my way here tonight and I saw a flashing, I guess it's a memo board located at the green saying, "Parking will strictly be enforced. Parking meters will strictly be enforced from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m." I thought after the meeting, last council meeting, when so many people got up...
Kathy, we're, we're definitely looking into that and changing that.
But why put that sign, John?
I didn't even realize it was, I didn't realize it was up there.
Oh, I was ready to pull the plug when I passed.
Ignore it because the nine o'clock at night thing's not gonna happen.
But it says strictly enforced, and, you know, whatever. So then, you know, keeping on that note, when I got the issue before last at the Chronicle, when it said how many people, you know, that, that were in agreement with this, not just the regulars that come here all the time and have an input, but so many other people came in to say they were in it, and the closing paragraph said, "Tros responded by saying it is his job to enforce the ordinance that are passed and let the public know, adding that the council could change the ordinance if it so desires." I thought after the last meeting that you were just squashing, I have no idea.
We're waiting, we're bringing, we're bringing in, what's his name?
Parking consultant.
Parking consultant.
Why? Why? You're, you're doing it for who screwed us up. All your professionals have messed you up in the past. The people, you know, you want us to come to these meetings, you want us to have input. We tell you what we think, we tell you what we suggest. It's, it's constructive criticism, it's positive thinking, and yet, you're, you're not listening to us.
Kathy, Lenny, Lenny Beers is one of, one of the top parking guys in the country.
But he doesn't know Hackensack. He doesn't know what's killing us.
He knows, he knows his cities.
He doesn't.
He knows Roway, excuse me?
All your professionals have messed you up, John. You always listen to the experts, and they've gotten us in, in bad shape.
I'm gonna give the courtesy of explaining why those hours were important, but right now, this council's leaning against not going past six o'clock on the parking, all right?
We need to, we need some kind of business. The restaurants are just starting to get their feet wet. Give them a chance, let people come and enjoy it. You're real, you're real, it's an insult, it's an insult to the, the restaurant owners and to the people who patronize them. It's an insult to the restaurant owners and to the people who patronize them. I see we have, I'm gonna call him victim number five coming up, and I send him my condolences because we've had such a bad time with the city managers. Mr. Trost, I wish you luck. If you need somebody for reference, do not put me on the list.
Don't worry, I won't put you on the list.
And take your selective code book and everything else. You screwed us in every area possible. Property maintenance is at its all-time low, and yet, you push this cultural center, which I'm not, you know, this money pit, but to get us garbage trucks, you were supposed to take care of that situation, and to linger on this garbage situation when you know it takes a good nine months to hire, to get some vehicles, some garbage trucks in, and we haven't done that yet. And this is, you know, you move your feet on the little things and other stuff gets to be passed so important. We have to manage the city. The everyday operations are not happening here. Our DPW workers, they do so much work. The policemen, all the fire department, the sanitation, that's so important. You shorten the season. You started it later and you ended it early. And people did not get those messages. Pass last night, Sunday night, and see the garbage, how it stunk last night with the heat. It should go at least until October. What was the, why couldn't you just expand it? The splash park, we expanded it services like five people. We're wasting money like crazy. The culture, the what do you call, M&amp;M building, we do not need another cynicism. Put them in the old cultural art building. We do not need to spend money on that building. We do not need to make it bigger. Start tightening your belts. Give us the services. Take care of your city first. Do the old, do the important everyday situation first before you get to the, to the, to the stuff that we really don't need, that's not important. I don't know. I'm just shocked. I just, I just can't understand how we can't run the city more efficiently. And maybe the new city manager could. Like I said, he's really getting himself into a big mess because I wouldn't want this job for anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Seeing none.
Motion to close the public portion.
Before introducing?
Before you introduce them.
All right, any motion to close the meeting to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Killian Eddis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. This time, I'd like to bring up Mr. Ted Ehrenberg. Would you please step up? Ted comes from, he's got a history of, actually, a city that's very similar to Hackensack in the way Bloomfield, which is demographically very similar to Hackensack in size and with some redevelopment going on, a lot of similarities. Also served as the business administrator or city manager in Bloomingdale. And Ted, take the microphone, introduce yourself.
Sure.
You can have the one.
You can take that right out.
Do the one.
Here.
Don't throw it. Lenny Nick used to break them all the time.
Hi, my name is Ted Ehrenberg, and thank you, Mayor and council, for allowing me to speak. I've been appointed your new city manager. I have 38 years of municipal government experience. My career started as a policeman, and I was a policeman for 28 years. I retired at the rank of chief, and I was chief for 11 years. So, I have a long background in law enforcement and worked in a community in Morris County. That experience led me to retire and become the borough administrator for the borough of Bloomingdale, where I was the borough administrator for seven years. I left Bloomingdale to go to Bloomfield, where I've been the township administrator for the last three years. These experiences of working in municipal government and working with municipal employees, I think, bring a background and a culture of understanding of the components and the operations of a municipal government. These operations have to be maintained. Residents have to be served. Unfortunately, these folks are challenged with the 2% cap and the governor's appreciation that he thought when you put a 2% cap, it was gonna solve all of our problems. Those problems, unfortunately, control 2% of the municipal budget. They do nothing to control your taxes. Obviously, this community, and I can't comment on the challenges that I'm gonna face yet because I don't know all of them. I've never stepped foot. I've never looked at your books, but I do come with some experience and some knowledge and hopefully some expertise to help you. But the one thing I am committed to is to make it work. I'm not a show guy. I didn't come down here to make a big splash. I start early. I work long, and I'm here to make a difference. Because the point is, there's no point in having somebody that's not gonna help you folks sort out your troubles. No matter how many people you hire, unless we work collectively together, this is not gonna find solutions. I'm a big solution guy. I was talking to my new friend here, the patrolman here, about being a policeman and how policemen learn early on in their career to solve people's problems. It's not written in a book. It's not, you know, in a chapter and a page. It's when you meet people that have problems, it's our responsibility to help solve those. That background has been in mine, edged for 28 years and 11 years as a chief of police. So, I have a complete understanding of all these different issues that you folks are gonna face, but we're gonna face them together because I work hard with our department heads and the employees that work there. Because I don't think I'm any better than anybody that works here, and certainly, they have the ability to be better than me because they have the institutional knowledge of the community and also working for the municipality. So, it's gonna take me some time to get my feet underneath me, but I'm a tenacious man, and this is a town that comes with a few challenges. I've watched all your council meetings before I came down here. This is an interesting bunch. It's an interesting bunch, but I came here with the absolute commitment with both eyes open to know that this is all fixable. You have good people here, and you folks, unfortunately, have some past history that I've not been exposed to. So, I won't comment any of that because it doesn't do me any good, and I'm only here to work from October 1st forward. I'm not here to play the blame game. I'm not here to cause any problems, and you folks can reach me at my office or call me, and we will sit down and chat through this. Because if we work together, we can solve these problems and these solutions. But it appears that some of these conditions have just manifested because we haven't had the ability to address them. But I'm committed to make this work. I'm thankful to this mayor and council for giving me the opportunity to do this. Bloomfield has $300 million worth of redevelopment, so I have some experience at that. So, I understand the challenges they're gonna face this town, but I think we can make it, and I think we can make it together. And obviously, I've read some articles. I've heard some stories, but all of that, unfortunately, and nothing against our press, may not be completely true. And unfortunately, there's always stories, someone said this, this one said that. I think you gotta get to the truth, and I think you gotta get to it soon, because if you don't, you just don't get anything done. And all I can say is, I hope I earned your trust and your respect, and I'm here to get this work done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ted. At this time, I know we've got another two weeks or a little bit more, another meeting, meeting or beating. I can't remember what we, what they are anymore.
The 27th.
But I want to congratulate you and wish you the best. I know it hasn't been easy here. It's not an easy place to work in that position. Hackensack's a tough city. We told you that coming in, and it hasn't changed since I said it to you the first time, but I want to-
Two years.
I want to thank you and congratulate you, and it's not an easy fort to hold down. So, thank you. Leo?
First of all, David, I want to thank you for everything you did for us, for the city. Enjoy your retirement. Where you gonna go? Cabo San Lucas?
Yes. October 2nd, I'm on a plane.
Okay. Enjoy, you and your wife. And now, let's go to congratulations to the kids, you know, for the track team and his coaches, and same guy that we got people like Walter and Dean and his friends, that they were there in the right place at the right time. And related to the question about sanitation, I'm waiting for a few, I say, a little bit more information, I will make my decision, and I promise that I will make the right decision. And what have we got? And for instance, sometime when I hear people complaining about the problem that we got, they have to remember that we always try to do the right thing. Sometime, I wanna say that for me, it's a surprise that people, they used to complain about sanitations, about this, about that. It's the same people now that are coming here and say, "They wonderful. Everything was okay. We don't have any problem with that." It's like you have double face, you know? So, thank you for coming.
I'd also like to say, it was a pleasure to have the proclamations tonight, to see all the young men and women and how happy they were and how all their medals were jingling, and, you know, that was a big part of their walking around and having those medals. And of course, you know, to Dean and our constable and the DPW workers, it's always nice to hear such, I guess, not only kindness, but just being alert and being willing to put yourself out there and help. You know, today, so many people want to just look the other way when they see something or they don't want to become involved. To see that we have those types of folks, you know, here, not only as residents but as employees in the city, I mean, I just think it speaks volumes for the city. All right, a couple of things to talk about some of the questions. I'm sorry, Mr. Lewis just walked out, but maybe we could reach out to him, David, from your office. I remember him being here, and I can assure everyone that, yes, you know, 2/3 of the residential properties did see a tax decrease or a tax stay the same. We have the numbers. We threw them all in a spreadsheet to make sure. You know, there was a slight shift to the commercial, so some of the commercial properties did see more of an increase, but I even, I took the numbers and I even threw the commercial numbers in, and even if you look at all the residential and the commercial, it's still 61% of all of that showed either a decrease in tax or stability of staying the same. But those numbers are 100% accurate, and yeah, there are folks, myself included, whose taxes did go up, but we did see a fair and equal distribution of the assessments, and that's something that's been long overdue in the city, and that's something we plan on maintaining. As far as tax abatements, there was some discussion of that this morning, this evening. We've done five so far, and of those five, those properties, we're bringing in approximately $500,000 in taxes, and year one, under the tax abatements, they'll be bringing in $2.5 million. So, we're looking at a $2 million turnaround in revenue just on the five properties that we've dealt with. So, this is the way to bring revenue into the city. It's a proven fact, and I see Mr. Gelber has left, but I have to disagree with him that financial stability was and is the key to bringing the development into this town. I don't dispute or don't disagree with him when he says that we're a safe community and we provide great services for our residents. I don't disagree, but we've been doing that for a very long time. Why haven't we seen the investment in our city? Why have we seen these changes recently? It's due to financial stability. Folks are not going to be able to borrow the types of money they need to invest. I think we're up to, David, it was 248 or 250 million dollar investment right now in the city, and-
And that doesn't include all the ones that are in-
Just on the new, just on the five that we're talking about. And you cannot receive that kind of financial investment if you do not and cannot prove financial stability, and this is a credit to all of our city employees, and especially our CFO has worked very hard to make sure that this happened. Also, Mr. Gelber, we haven't hired five city managers. We came into office and we retained the same city manager that we had. The first city manager that we hired was Mr. Trost, and I will take the opportunity here, Mr. Trost, again, thank you for your two years. We've accomplished a lot. I know you enjoyed the redevelopment as we did, and then that's your area of expertise, and it shows. It shows in what's happened in the community, and we wish you well. It's his opportunity to choose to retire, and he's leaving here on good terms and feeling proud of his many accomplishments here, and I welcome Mr. Ehrenberg. Ted, I think we have another good fit, and I think we're gonna see great things come from him as well. But it was not five. Parking on Main Street, excuse me, Ms. Gelber. Parking on Main Street. Parking hours on Main Street, I think we talked about it. We heard it last time. We're definitely looking into it. We agree that now is not the time to go to nine o'clock, so the council has agreed, but we need to make the changes and have it done properly, so we're definitely looking into that. Last but not least, sanitation. I heard you, Mr. McCourt, but it is our responsibility as a council to look at all cost-saving measures. And one thing I really agree with, that you said, it isn't all about the money. It isn't always all about the money, but we still have that responsibility as council members to obtain that information and to make decisions with our eyes wide open. And this may be a case where it isn't all about the money, and you're talking to someone that's very involved financially here, and I understand that. It isn't always all about the money, but we're gathering the rest of that information, and I think the mayor, you know, alluded to the fact that, yeah, the bids were higher than we thought they would be, and we're going to do the right thing. Should we not privatize? Should we continue to maintain sanitation? One thing I want to make sure that this message gets out to all of our sanitation employees. The one good thing I think that was in, the one thing that I felt really positively about was that we were going to be offering other opportunities to many of our sanitation workers, and I want to reassure all of those employees that should they want a different opportunity or a different career path in the city, that is still open to them, and we will support that 100%. As far as purchasing sanitation trucks, I think I talked a little bit about this last time. When we came into office, there was no vehicle replacement plans. We were in dire need. I think the first year, I asked Jim, I think we bought 22 police cars. We've had to purchase two major fire trucks, and yeah, the sanitation trucks were on our list, and that's where we are now. We're at the point of, okay, we got some of these real safety critical issues out of the way of equipment that we had to purchase that was long overdue, and now we're focusing here, and we're going to work together and we're gonna do the right thing. John mentioned local finance board. You know, we speak about our $30 million tax appeal problem. Well, I'm going on Wednesday with our CFO, and we're gonna go before the local finance board for our third installment, our last, hopefully, last $10 million that will fund the final part of this $30 million. So, I ask, you know, keep your fingers crossed, wish us well. We have a wonderful story to tell, and I'm very confident that we will, we will get their permission to go forward and move forward with this, but that's where we'll be on Wednesday. And the street fair October 1st, we'll be reminding about you again at the next meeting. I hope to get everyone out there. Leo's wanting to also remind everyone about all the paving that we've been able to accomplish in the city. So, there's many, 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 many things that have been put on our priority list that we're all very proud of. Not only Mr. Trost has enabled us to do these things, but this council has fought very hard to make sure that we were able to accomplish all of these things. And I have the numbers in my head because I'm ready for my talk before the finance board, but getting back to numbers and increases, this past year, on a $100 million budget for the city, that budget increased by $2.5 million. Of that $2.5 million, $1.5 million of that went exactly for the last round when we increased the tax bond from last year for the $10 million. So, that means the entire city pension increases, health increases, salary increases, was kept to $1 million. That's a phenomenal accomplishment, and that's hard work for all of our city employees, pitching in together and doing the right thing for our residents, and that is something each and every one of us are very proud of. You know, we sit up here and we take a lot of criticism. You need to hear some of the things and be reminded of some of the things that have been accomplished over these past three years. Thank you for coming and have a good evening.
Thank you. Dave?
School started last week. Please drive safely out there. Congratulations to the track team on their successful season once again. Dean and the DPW, we appreciate you. Hackensack High School has their first home game this Friday at 7:00 p.m. Please come out. And to Mr. Malone, I'm really offended that you keep using the word fish towards Carver Park like we don't eat hamburgers and hot dogs as a concession stand in the Alfred Jones
the Alfred Jones Community Center. Not the Dave Sims Dome, Dave Sims House, never has anyone ever paid a penny to use that building. Now, I wish you would stop saying that all African-Americans do is eat fish. I'd appreciate if you wouldn't use that towards our neighborhood. Thank you.
Debbie?
Well, the school year got off to a good start. As an employee of the Board of Education, I have seen that the morale has improved, I guess, as a result of some changes that were made there. And, you know, everybody seems to be very happy, and the kids are really doing well. You know, we got off to a really good school start, start of the school year. Yesterday, I was present at the 9/11 ceremony. They had a lovely ceremony at Overpack Park. Dave and I were there, and it did cross my mind why we don't have a ceremony here in Hackensack, even though I believe we were fortunate not to lose anybody on that dreadful day, as far as I know. Did we lose anybody?
We lost three people.
We lost three people, okay. So that makes it even more, you know, that gives us even more reason to have a ceremony here in Hackensack in the county seat. Dave, wish you Godspeed in your next chapter. One more meeting, I know, okay. But, you know, you're going to need it anyway. Until you leave here, Godspeed.
What could happen to two of your try folks?
That's right. We welcome Mr. Ehrenberg, and we wish him good luck here in his position. Oh, and I forgot to bring up during the work session, I've been talking to a lot of dog owners, and during the summer, when we had the movies down at the Atlantic Street Park, I saw the many people coming out of the Millennium Building with dogs. And from speaking with certain dog owners, I think it's time for a dog park, and I'd like to try to make that happen. I hope we can make that happen.
We had discussion for one and a half.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, maybe for the next year's budget, we can put that in, maybe. I've already started gathering information. No, it's not expensive. It's not expensive, and I think our dogs deserve some recreation too. I'm a dog lover, but I don't own one right now. I have two kids, okay.
Dogs never grow up.
Yeah, I know, but they die. Okay, and I think that's it. Thank you and good night.
Mayor, if I can, the, I'm not sure if the council knows. I think you may, but the fire department has received a piece of steel from the Twin Towers, and there is a small monument that will be placed in front of City Hall.
All right.
I believe it's Boswell Engineering is working on the design, and I believe Kramer may be donating some time to construct it. So that should be, so that should be by next year, that there will be a memorial here at City Hall for that event to happen. And I think once it's dedicated, we will have something at that time as well.
Thank you. And I'll start out my comments with reaching out to Rich Gelber, who is no longer here, but I know he'll probably be watching this in TV land. Rich, you brought up a great idea, and I'm 100% behind it, and I challenge you and myself to maybe get a committee started and move this forward. And this time next year, we'd be having our first memorial service for the 9/11 event here in Hackensack pertaining especially to the three people who gave up their lives in that horrible event. So, Rich, you know how to get ahold of me, and let's get started on that. And anybody else on the council who wants to get involved, it's a great idea. The street festival, October 1st. It's also, I forgot to mention, it's the art walk, the catwalk, as we call it. The art walk will be out there on Bantha Place, all right? It's usually on, was it Demarest?
Yes.
But this time it's on Bantha Place. Bantha Place will be closed. All different types of artwork will be displayed. People come out. It's a great, great event. The entertainment is going to be wonderful this year. It's a Latino band called Orchestra Choyakan, all right? From what I've seen, they're quite spectacular. I went on YouTube, and they've got some following. They're a great, great band. I hope to see a lot of people come out for this show. Hopefully, the weather is much better than it was last year. They owe us after last year. Like was mentioned, school is open. Be careful driving. It's always a little tricky this time of year. You know, you get used to the kids not being around, and all of a sudden, they're right back on the streets. You got to be very careful. Kudos to the track team. That was a special moment for me. I don't know whether you all noticed or not, but Seth Neal is a young man I coached for years. Years ago, was a very good athlete, went to Hackensack High School, great kid. And it means a lot to me to see a kid that I coached coaching, all right? Because it means they picked up, they know, they picked something up and carried it forward. It's picking up the torch and carrying it. And I really appreciated seeing that. It was a good moment for me there. The proclamations, kudos to the gentleman who saved those people in the river, and kudos to our constable, Dean Matalian. And again, sanitation, you know, guys, we're here. We, our job, one of the jobs, is to look into saving the city money. We will look at all different ways to do it. And this is just one thing we were doing. We certainly weren't here to, you know, a lot of the, it's unfortunate, it's unfortunate situation that, you know, that the men are in right now, but this is something that the city felt it had to look at. Soon as these numbers are in, we're going to expedite it as fast as possible. We couldn't even get ahold of the CFO today because of his emergency situation, and hopefully we can get ahold of him tomorrow and expedite this as fast as possible. I want to wish Deputy Mayor and who's going with you?
Jim.
Jim Mangan and our auditor Frank Di Maria, who are going down to Trenton on Wednesday. David? Oh, you're not going. And I don't blame you either.
Less is more.
Yeah, for going down in front of the local finance board, hopefully for the last time, or at least for something of this magnitude. It's not an easy thing to do. These guys are very tough, and, you know, a lot of the decisions that are made this last few years are based on us having to go down there. I mean, you know, we cannot take chances with the finances in this city and go down there and not get this bond. Look at it this way. If we need a $10 million bond and they turn us down, that $10 million gets paid when, David?
One year.
One year.
Next year's budget.
That means next year's budget goes up $10 million. You're looking at layoffs, you're looking at, it would be a disaster. Taxes would go through the roof in one year, multiple layoffs just to keep the city afloat. A disaster. And I'm not going to comment too much on what Mrs. Hurwitz said, all right? My opinions and her opinions are obviously different, and it's a political difference, but I will say this. In the three years since we're up here and found out about these tax appeals, nobody, but nobody, has come up and challenged what we've said about it. That's $30 million that wasn't accounted for in this city from past years, all right? Nobody has said boo about it, all right? Now, I served on the council from 2009 to 2013. I certainly had no idea we owed $30 million, and I find that a little strange, all right? So, take that for what it is, but no one has come and says, oh, that's not true. Not once. So I'm not going to use the word corruption, but I'm certainly going to, you know, look, let's go back to the old phrase, follow the money, all right? Follow the money. $30 million we got saddled with, not we, you, everybody out there, $30 million, all right? So, us two, us two. So, nobody. Mrs. Hurwitz hasn't been up here once to say, oh, that's not true, John. $30 million, we don't know $30 million. It never happened. So, thanks, everybody, for coming tonight, sticking it out. I appreciate it. David, again, we'll see you in two weeks, and we have a little bash for you. And motion to close the meeting.
Offer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.